Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our board meeting for July 22nd. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just got through with a closed session. Start the meeting. Additions, deletions?
Nothing.
Nothing. There will be, it's not on here, but we will have a presentation by the police chief. It assures me it won't take long, so that will be forthcoming. All right. With that, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. As you will notice, we have a couple of our board members are missing tonight. Udo O'Connor and Kyle do both say are excused. All right. Public comment on agenda items. Three minutes and a minute. Pardon me?
Do they have a presentation?
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes. Then please come forward.
Kathy Walker, 26051 Thorpe Court. Few weeks ago, I had the need to call the police. And I was so happy that the dispatchers talked to me. They knew me. They helped me. They guided me through a situation that was pretty tough. And I thought to myself, I've always supported the police. And my God, was I happy because nobody ever thinks they're going to need them. But when you do, you're so glad they're there. So I just wanted to say I support the police and the fire and voting for this millage. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Anyone else? Hi, Bill. Just, do we have anybody behind the podium? Just Mickey trying to hide from me. All right. With no other public comment, we'll move on to consent agenda. David?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 24-037, which consists of the following: Minutes of the July 8th, 2024 regular meeting; check registers dated through July 12th, 2024; approval to process and distribute payments through August 2nd, 2024; MML Workers' Compensation Fund Board of Trustees election; and Michigan Arts and Culture Council Experience Support Grant.
Second.
All right. Any questions concerning consent agenda or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda 24-037, which consists of the minutes of July 8th, 2024 regular meeting, the check register dated through July 12th, 2024, approval to process and distribute payments through August 2nd, 2024, MML Workers' Compensation Fund Board of Trustee elections, and the Michigan Arts and Culture Council Experience Support Grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Our consent agenda passes, which brings us to our action items and...
If you would.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I move that the township board adopt the July 11, 2024 recommendation of the Grozeal Fire Commission to purchase a Circul Air heavy-duty industrial extractor and her Circul Air portable dryer from McQueen Fire Equipment.
Support.
I was going to put that in history and purpose, but the...
That's not part of the motion.
The equipment is a dryer that is 1,000...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ask you to put it in the motion.
The amount will be $9,147.80 for the dryer, $6,792.45 for the washer, for a total of $15,940.25 for the purchase of both pieces of equipment.
Support. Okay, thank you. Now, you can go into your...
Thank you. History, purpose, and explanation is pretty straightforward. The fire department currently has no equipment to remove toxins and other carcinogens from their equipment after fire and hazmat responses. The science is extremely clear that these substances are a direct cause of cancers and other serious health-related illnesses in firefighters. Embodding this well-known fact is that Michigan compiled law 418.405 states that any firefighter in service for more than 60 months, which is diagnosed with cancer, it is presumed that the cancer is related to firefighting. Cancer is the number-one cause of work-related death in firefighting. Our firefighters have been exposed routinely to other cancer-related substances such as PFAS, PFAS, which has been removed from their workplace. It is now time to take the necessary steps to remove other cancer-causing substances from the workplace. A purchase of their Circul Air heavy-duty extractor and dryer will absolutely remove these dangerous carcinogens. Any questions from anybody?
Any questions?
Chief, did you have anything?
Seeing none. Seeing none.
Well, Carl, I think you did a great job reiterating what the fire commission recommended. Grozeal needs this equipment to further enhance its capabilities and continue the recruiting process. We need to make the work environment as safe as possible for the firefighters. They are around these cancer-causing agents every time they're in the fire department. We're hoping that this equipment removes it once and for all and makes their environment a safer environment.
And I'd just add, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not just cancer. I mean, there's all kinds of lung problems and other things associated with it. So this is not just for cancer, but it is for the health of our fire.
That's 100% correct. There's all sorts of respiratory illnesses, you know, so this is essential to continue the movement forward of the service. So I thank the board. I don't know, I see my esteemed workplace partner is going to make a little pitch about the millage. May I while I'm up here?
That's not what we're...
Okay.
And I did pass over you because it's not on here and I can't read, so...
I hate to be impromptu, but I'm pretty impromptu sometimes.
But you know what? We have, I think we have a little time.
Okay.
So while, we'll do the presentations after we end this action item.
You got it, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Other questions, other questions for John or Carl regarding this? Seeing none. We have a motion to adopt the July 11th, 2024 recommendation of the Grozeal Fire Commission to purchase a Circul Air heavy-duty industrial extractor and a Circul Air portable dryer from McQueen Fire Equipment. The dryer is a cost of $9,147.80, and the extractor is at a cost of $6,792.45, for a total of $15,940.25. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? John, you have your extractor and dryer.
I thank the board for its continued solid support of the fire department.
And now, if you would, and Doug, you want to make your way up here? I apologize for that. It was a late call to me to have the presentation. And if we're going to do one, we're going to do them both. So, John, if you would, and I just ask you to try and be as brief as possible, but get your point across.
Can you do those stepbrothers? Move the stepbrothers?
Well...
You are.
I think it's fitting because the fire department and the police department work hand-in-hand in responding to medical emergencies and police emergencies, et cetera. However, this is what your fire department does. Your fire department responds, provides EMS, and transports to local hospitals the following: cardiac arrest, hemorrhages, bleeds, strokes, change in level of consciousness, diabetic emergencies, choking, breathing respiratory difficulties, and emergencies, traumatic injuries, burns, cardiac episodes, hypothermia, heat strokes, dehydration, drowning, poisoning, gastrointestinal emergencies, overdoses, seizures, falls with injuries, lacerations, punctures, evulsions, amputation, gunshot wounds, open and close fractures, spinal cord injuries, behavioral psychiatric illnesses, viral emergencies, bacterial infections, emergencies, hazmat spills, and situations, structure fires, mass casualty incidents, car accidents, car-to-car, car-to-pedestrian, car-to-bike, athletic injuries, spinal and head injuries, water rescues, airport emergencies, and emergencies involving self-harm. The fire department, I am not on social media, but some of the firefighters indicate to me that there's some questions about the fire department not receiving, or do they receive outside funding from state or federal governments? Is the pursuit of the fire department to obtain outside funding from the federal state involving non-obligated payments? Here are a few. The fire department received a $90,000 grant in the last couple of years for 22 SCBA packs, 25 masks, and 44 air bottles. $10,000 for 25 new helmets. $180,000 for fire department building modifications. $90,000 for command vehicles. $10,000 for upgrades to public service sirens equipment. $30,000 for hose training, tower repairs, and modifications. Six of our last firefighters were put through Fire 1 and Fire 2 by state funding at $150 apiece, when normally it was $1,800 apiece. The last three firefighters went through a 40-hour pump class at zero cost per firefighter, when typically it's $2,000. I participated in a three-day pump class. There were about five of us at zero cost, all provided through state or federal funding. Also, we have had two VIFS classes for four of our firefighters for zero cost. All in all, I think the fire department has received nearly $500,000 in state and/or federal outside funding, all non-obligated to pay back. So I hear the hubbub through my firefighters that some people put on social media, what grants do they get? Well, there's your answer: down near 500 grand in the last three years. So your fire department is a very active fire department. I know over the weekend, within one hour, they had three medical emergencies. They responded to them all efficiently, and they did a great job. I do not hold them anything less than heroes for what they do on this fire, for this island. And I think our variable costs to run the fire department are about 500 grand. There are fixed costs, but there's nothing I can do about that. And all I can say is, this is a wonderful police department. One great thing that I really appreciate is when we go on calls at 2:00 in the morning, they ensure that the scene is safe. Because eight times out of 10, they are there before we are. And we need them to keep the firefighters safe. I know Doug Carmack intimately. He's a great chief. He does a powerful job at the police department. And I'm urging the public to vote in favor of the fire millage and the police millage. And you deserve all you get.
No, you don't.
Well, I do.
Stay away from that.
Yeah.
Please.
So I thank you.
Thank you, John. And it's amazing, right off the top of your head, you had all that. It's just, that's good. Thanks, John.
Firefighters prepare me well. If they don't, I hear about it in the morning.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll take a seat, and I appreciate the board's support.
Not a problem.
I brought a PowerPoint.
Yeah, he's going to one-up you now.
He should have gone first.
Go ahead, Doug. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chief, for those fine remarks about the police department and fire department. So I'm going to go over this renewal, which is a renewal for the police, not a new millage. It's the same for the fire. It's a renewal, not a new millage. For the police department, this is our current funding programs. We have the five millages that we operate under. We have the two. One's allocated, one's operating the top there. That is shared with the township, but we do get majority of those funds. The bottom three are the operating millages that are dedicated. And you see the one in yellow, that's the ones expiring in next month on the first. And that's going to be on the next ballot for the election. Voted, it shows it's 6.6 mils, but because of headly rollbacks, we only get to collect 5.79 of those mills that are voted. So this right here is the language that was approved by the township board on April 22nd. I'm going to leave it up there for a minute for people at home to read it, or for you guys, refamiliarize yourself with it. You'll see in the middle, on the third line down, reduced to .9701 mills by the required millage rollbacks, and that's headly. So that's showing that even though we're voting for the 1 mil, we're only getting .97 of it. And this is a renewal. I'll leave it up there for a minute. And the estimated return on that millage would be $747,000 on the first year. So what services do the police department provide the community? 2023, we responded to over 11,500 calls for service, of which there's 850 medical calls. And like the fire chief has said, we respond to the majority of them first, not because we're beating the fire department to the scene, but our officers are on the road, already patrolling, and they're already in service to respond to the calls. And they use the measures that are needed, and the fire department, when they show up minutes later, they take over. And then we provide security, like the fire chief has said. In both patrol cars, in the patrol cars that are out there, we have two AEDs. So both cars carrying an AED, and one carries a Lucas device, which has been a game changer for us and the fire department for extending life measures to people in need. All of our officers and dispatchers are trained in CPR. The Grozeal Police Department was the first to have every dispatcher and officer trained as emergency medical dispatch downriver. We're very proud of that. A lot of cities will have their fire, or their police officers work on the desk, but they're not trained. Ours are all trained. We're the first one. I think we still might be the only one. We have a partnership with the schools. We participate with the schools in lockdown drills, school events, the Alice Drills. We provide a school crossing guard for the Meridian. I've heard that guy does a good job. Comment, we commit an officer to the 5th grade. Derek is an instructor, Officer Canterbury. He's finished his second year. We conduct yearly active shooter drills for officers and our dispatchers. And then we, last year was our first year, but we're hosting, we coordinate with the fire department. We're trying to do a larger and larger mass casualty incident training. Services continued. We have a 24/7 dispatch center, where all of our staff is trained in a wide variety of categories, include crisis and medical assistance. Our dispatch gets a wide range of calls. You can imagine what we get, all around the board, like John had mentioned, a lot of them that they receive on their end. Grozeal Safety was a program that one of our officers, Susan Delpi, has actually created herself, and she got trademarked. It's an online platform where residents can go online for free and enter information in there that's only accessible by our dispatch. So codes in the houses, maybe where a key is hidden, or next of kin, or emergency contact information. Code Red, I think we're all pretty familiar with. It's a community alert system, alerts our community in emergencies or just information to be put out. That's shared by police, fire, and the township. Prescription medication takeback is a partnership with DEA to safely dispose of unwanted and unused medications. So when you walk in our lobby, you'll see a big red bin. You pour your medications in there, we package it up, and then it goes to DEA, and they dispose of it in an environmentally safe procedure. Army Responding is a platform that we have in dispatch, that when the firemen come in service, they activate their in-service mode, and it shows, and it's way for the dispatchers to keep and coordinate fire responses. And then the police reserve unit. There are unpaid men and women volunteers who support the police department's mission and community needs. These men and women are great. They help us in so many aspects of checking houses of people on their vacations, to Islandfest, to fireworks, to up and down West River Road, to going out riding with our officers, being an extra set of eyes and ears on the island. They're kind of the unforgotten people in our department. Some of the technology that we've been upgrading, we've, the LPR system, I believe it was last year, this board had approved us to upgrade our license plate reader to the Flock system. We've used it on some pretty big incidences in the last couple, actually, weeks. They're on both bridges. We implemented body worn cameras for the first time in our department history about two months ago. Every officer, including the ACL, has one. The in-car camera system is part of Axon. The in-car cameras system is another Axon product that's actually going to start tomorrow. So every, all of our police cars will have the old systems taken out, and Axon's having people flying in as part of the contract, and they're going to install all new car cameras and the digital system over two days. Community cameras, we have cameras placed throughout the community to help deter crime and assist in police operations. We have a camera on Macomb Commons. There's been some damage there lately, now we have a camera up there. Public safety building, people forget that's a warming and cooling center during the winter and summer heat. And then we just upgraded, as part of the Axon project, we had to upgrade our Wi-Fi system and the whole network to compensate for what the system brings. So now we have a free, for the first time ever, we have a free network for public use. That's a joint fire and police endeavor there. Some of the partnerships we have. Downriver Mutual Aid DMA, it's huge for us. We're a small city cut off by the mainland by two bridges. We have two bridges that keeps us connected. It's a way to collaborate with neighboring communities and increase resources and assistance during time of need. We have a dive team. The dive team is part of the DMA program, but the dive team is composed of officers and firemen, fire personnel from across downriver, but it's run on Grozeal. The deputy chief, Todd Rosak, is actually the commander of the dive team. SWAT, we provide an officer to the SWAT team, and we also provide an officer to the CNT Crisis Negotiation Team. Major Crimes Task Force is not an official task force in the sense of it's got an agreement, but what it is, is when there's a major crime in a city, every officer, every department will send a detective or two over there to do a force multiplier. Instead of having one or two detectives to do investigation, they can have 30 or 20 in a matter of half hour. I know a couple of cities have already utilized that. And then the DEA has been a long program. We've had agreement with the DEA to provide a task force officer, and in return, we get support with investigations and forfeiture money. So what does all this mean? Maintaining a trained and professional department comes at a cost. Police operating millage one accounts for 747,000 of our budget, which is a little bit over 15% of our entire budget. The estimated 747,000 generated by the renewal, not a new millage, the renewal is to maintain our current operations. The department currently operates with 23 members, which is below our optimal level of 24. To put it simple, I know this isn't supposed to be a scare tactic, but math is math. If you remove this millage renewal from our funding, it has a significant impact on our staff reductions, operational impacts. You take any amount of money, 15%, from any private business or any government business, it's a pretty substantial blow to everybody that's in that organization. So, any questions? Makes sense?
And I apologize for skipping over you. We got you in, though, so, thank you. All right. We will continue on with our action items. David, if you would, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Gabriel Roder Smith &amp; Company for OPEB actuarial services for the years, fiscal years ended on March 31, '24, '25, and '26. Thank you. I'm going to let Teresa do this time, so...
And before you start, Teresa, so this is, we had this...
It's a continuation of existing contract.
Yeah, but we had this issue last meeting, and there were some questions really around the three years.
Right.
And what we determined, maybe even at that meeting, was three years was normal. To start with somebody new would cost us more, actually. So... To start with somebody new would cost us more, actually. So anyway, we did go back and check everything out and we're coming back with this and now we'll turn it over to Teresa.
So the contract that the township has had with GRS has been a, it's a three-year cycle. That means that at March 31st of 2024, that's the year that they base their actuarial value, full valuation on, which is why it has the higher cost. That report is then used for the March 31st, 2025 and 2026 years to do the required governmental accounting standards boards reporting that we're required to put and include in our financial statements. So, and actually, it's not a three, the value, main valuation is not done every three years, it's done every two years. So currently, the four, even though this includes March 31st of 2024, I already received a GASB or Governmental Accounting Standards Report for March 31st of 2024. They did a roll forward technique and I provided them with limited updated information to complete the audit that we're currently trying, trying to complete. That information that I got for March 31st of 2024 was actually based on the OPEB valuation as of March 31st of 2022. So they need that extra year in there because it takes much longer to do the main valuation to get it ready for the following year. So they are looking, you know, right now is the time for them to be doing the, the main valuation and start compiling all the information. And also, this is still that my, my first year, so I'm trying to look at everything and see the value that it has to the township, if it makes good business sense. So the next time that we would have a new cycle beginning with the full valuation would be March 31st of 2026, which is two years from now, not three years.
Comments or questions from the board?
So I think one of the core concerns from the board was the time period and just because it would, this overlaps board terms. So just to clarify, this contract expires in March of 2026, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It does. But they will, I've already started, at the same time, they'll be starting the new full valuation at the same time.
Okay, so if we wanted to exit this contract, we would need to indicate that ahead of time and start looking for another.
Well.
Well, I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but I just want to understand. Okay.
Yeah, that's your timetable.
It gives a little bit more time without, without extending it, I guess, too long. I think, I think two years is, is fair. Again, so.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah, Jim, if I could just say one thing, I've got to be straight here. This has nothing to do with you, Teresa, or Derek. I understand that this firm is probably an excellent firm. I'm sure it's, it makes good business sense. You weren't around, Derek wasn't around either when something occurred. In good conscience tonight, just so you know, I'm going to be voting no, has nothing to do with you, your presentation or having this. In November, if I may be so bold, there's three of us that are running unopposed, so Derek and I are going to have a little meeting, maybe with a representative in November with this company, and I'm just going to say that'll be the end of it. But tonight, I understand it's going to go through and, and I have really kind of no problem with it, but my conscience isn't going to let me vote yes tonight, so that's the reason I'll be voting no. So that's it.
Thank you, Joe. Other comments, questions? Seeing none. We have a motion to approve the proposal for Gabriel Roder Smith and Company for OPEB Actuarial Services for the years ending March 31st, 2024, 2025, and 2026. We'll do a roll call vote on this. Joe?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Jameson?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that, that takes care of our, our action item number two. I would, I would caution everybody, make sure you get all the facts, if, you know, if you're thinking of changing or whatever you're going to do, always get all the facts, don't go off just the top. So with that, we have action item number three, which would be Kyle's, but he's not here, so I will read the motion. We have a motion that the township, the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes various amendments to Section 9.0 Commission Committee Appointments of the Administrative Policies and Procedures of Groseal Township. The suggested amendments are included in the supporting documents attached to this action item. Thank you. This is, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of meetings now and been, at each meeting, I think we had suggestions come up and the, the, what we have before us is the culmination of all those suggestions. Nothing has changed that wasn't discussed and the, the changes that were made are what was discussed. So with that, I would ask any, any questions or comments on that?
I, I like 9.5. I think it gives us, that's the commissioner removal. I think if we have to remove a commissioner, it's good to have a policy on it and not just the vagaries of law, of which I am not an expert. So I'm just happy to see that in there. Appreciate you putting that together, Derek.
Yeah, we, and we had it. We had it in the code. It was there. I mean, it wasn't anybody making anything up, but now we have it in both places.
Right, yeah, it was code, but it wasn't policy, so policy's easier for a layman like me.
And that, this is, the policies and procedure are the board's policies and procedures. So it's a nice, easier place to find it. Other comments, questions? Seeing none. We have a motion that the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes various amendments to Section 9.0 Commission Committee Appointments of the Administrative Policies and Procedures of Groseal Township. The suggested amendments are included in the supporting documentation attached to this action item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That is amended. And that ends our action items. Next, we have public comment on any topic, three minutes, the usual. Do we have any takers?
Bill has.
Yes, sir. We have the young man in the audience coming up. How you doing tonight, Bill?
Good.
Good.
I mean, it's sort of middle of Ohio, kind of east of her. Like Joe. I have the same reason. I have one of these with.
Is your mic on? Is the green light on?
Yeah, it is. Could you hear me?
Okay.
It's not on. That's on.
There's just a little button down there.
Too many buttons.
I'm standing here looking like the village idiot.
Yeah, go ahead.
Pensions are what I want to talk about in this situation that's here now. What happens, and I understand this, I mean, I had a brother-in-law who was a darn good actuary, I'm no expert, but I have an abstract feel that I think is reasonably solid. There's a lot of things going on with this, one or two years at a time and it builds up. And as I understand what you're saying, probably waiting two years if we wanted to shift gears or review the possibility of doing that would be better because it would coordinate well. I'm not against that, but I think that we should consider reviewing it. I'm honestly ill at ease with what events have been. I'm no expert, I don't have the full facts, but what I do know doesn't sit comfortably with me. And if you ever want to have an item in your budget that will come after you year after year at higher expense, it's a pension. I promise you that, okay? Until you have mortality and it changes you along the way. This is not insignificant to our future. I don't have the details, all I have is a gut sense from what I've learned over the course of my life as to where we're at, but I am cautious about this. And, and I wish there was more time or that we had had opportunity to address this sooner, perhaps, but life's not perfect either. I don't know what else to say, I've been as sincere as I can be. Do I push this button or leave it open for the next guy?
Uh, leave it open, if you would. Make it easier on the next. Thank you, Bill. Michelle?
Hi.
Aye. You didn't know how to do the button, so you wanted him to come up and do it. I get it.
Where is the button on? It says push, I'm assuming that's it. Okay, real quick, being an Arissa.
Naaman.
Oh, Michelle Bartlett. I've said that so many times, I think they know, but Michelle Bartlett, an envoy.
Thank you.
On the pension, of course, I'm interested in that, being an Arissa attorney and I'm not really sure I understood when the contract actually expires, but that, you know, I'd be happy to look at that later. For the fire department and the police department, so I've gone on social media and basically said that I support passing the millage for both. I've gone to the commission meetings and listened to them and to understand their operating budgets more. I also went to visit both the fire station and the police station and if you know me, I asked a million questions. That's how I learn and more detailed questions too, not just surface things. But based on what I saw, they have deferred maintenance, they have systems that need upgrading, they've really done everything they can to try and keep their budgets as tight as possible. I support them both in getting the millages renewed. Chief John talked a little bit about grants. It, it was a substantial amount in the grants, but keep in mind, our millages would just be higher without those grants, so it's not like you can trade one for the other. So just based on that, seeing what they do, how tight their budgets are, I just want to support both of them in the millage renewal. So thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Anyone else? Good evening, Margaret.
Hello, guys.
Good, how are you?
I am well. Margaret Shelton, Bellevue Road. Couple of things, but primarily, I will say that I've listened to the fire commission and I attended the police commission, but I've been paying attention to all of this and I just think that, I've expressed the same on social media, there's always bumps in the road when it comes to social media. I just want to strongly urge for anybody that's watching, I think it's really good if you have questions to attend these commission meetings or, you know, send in your questions and I'd like to hope, and I don't know if this happens, if, when people ask questions at a commission meeting or at a township meeting, if those are responded to, I really don't know, but if not, it would behoove you if you, at all possible, can come up and ask these questions rather than, there's a lot of misinformation that goes on in social media. I'd like to see us try to change that a little bit and skip the social media concept and maybe have some sort of newsletter or something that's, you know, easy for people to go to online, but not everybody goes online or understands how to do that. So a newsletter would be nice. Similar to, you know, again, I support both. I think we need to do that. I think we need to look ahead even further than just the renewals and consider the fact that we don't have enough officers on the road. A young officer was just recently killed in Melvindale. I know this is the safest place around down river, but let's keep it that way, right? Anything can happen and you just don't know and we need to consider that. Truly, I believe we do. Nobody wants new taxes, but that's, it's just an unfortunate situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else out there? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Freel. Do you have any, Mr. Freel?
Yes, I do have four tonight. First one is from Michelle Bucket on Blackmore. I would like to know why it's taking so long to deny a business that is known to use ketamine to treat psychiatric disorders from operating in a residential area that strictly prohibits any businesses. It doesn't make any logical sense and they are a business, no matter how they try to hide behind a religious exemption. This has gone on long enough and it needs to put an end to it. They don't belong in a residential area and no one wants them here in one. Please remove this business from Groseal where they don't belong. This has dragged on long enough, specifically states you can't have a business in a residential area. I don't even know how it got this far, using a religious exemption is just plain stupid. Is it, they are trying to avoid taxes by using this? The island townspeople are tired of this. Thank you for your time. Next one's from Deb Catcher, Hazelnut Court. I oppose any tax incentives or nonprofit designation for Fresh Start. This is a residential neighborhood. It is 100% inappropriate to have this type of activity in our residential neighborhoods. Please do not approve their status as an eligible nonprofit acting in our neighborhoods. I have personally experienced a similar activity in our previous home in Brownstown and can attest that it ended badly. Own up and do your diligence, dear trustees. Next up, Becky Obermeyer, Meridian Road. I have heard the house at the corner of Ferry and Meridian is set up as a church to rehab people who are depressed, suffering from PTSD, trauma. Neighbors were saying a naked woman was knocking on doors in the neighborhood. The house is located in the neighborhood. Aren't there zoning laws? This should not be allowed. This poses a danger and threat to our community. I hope the board can investigate this and shut it down. Thank you for your time. And last but not least, Mary Brezhnerhan, Bellevue. On March 20th, 2024, the planning commission had a meeting in regards to the Fresh Start application. The meeting was attended by many residents, including myself. During the meeting, Brian Borden, consultant for SafeBilt, went over all the ordinance rules with the planning commission. Many residents conveyed their concerns to the planning commission. At the end of a meeting that lasted for about three hours, the planning commission tabled their decision to allow Fresh Start to gather any other necessary information. On May 6th, 2024, the planning commission met once again to review the application and make a decision. 100% of the planning commission voted no to the Fresh Start application because they did not meet the requirement for practical difficulty. On May 28th, 2024, the zoning board met to review the ordinance rules and everyone voted no except a township board member. On July 8th, two weeks ago, the township board was supposed to make a final decision on the Fresh Start application, but it was postponed. The board assured the residents that everything was the same, but they had to make sure everything was in order. This whole process has gone on four months. The community counted on the township board's decision two weeks ago. It was a huge disappointment for this community. I can understand that a careful decision has to be made, but the board has had plenty of time to get all the necessary materials and facts together. To make matters worse, the residents were not informed on the decision for the postponement. It was just stated that they had to get a couple of questions answered. Moreover, Fresh Start has been able to continue their business in a residential area this whole time. Today is July 22nd, two weeks after the postponement, and it is not on the agenda. This board needs to justify the reasoning behind the decision to allow a business to continue to operate in a residential area. The board needs to also justify the reasoning behind this postponement with a lack of information. The community deserves some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, people who wrote in or communicated with Brian. That brings us to our reports. Brian, do you have anything for the clerk?
Yes, just quickly, a couple of things. It is election time, so state primary election is August 6th. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Remember that you can't split your ticket in the primary. That means you must vote only one party, front and back of the ballot. If you cross over vote, the entire partisan section will not count. The only, the nonpartisan and proposals will still count. Early voting begins this Saturday here at Township Hall and runs for nine consecutive days through Sunday, August 4th. Early voting will be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM each day. Early voting allows a voter to cast a ballot before election day and experience similar to voting on election day. During the early voting period, voters are issued a ballot and can, can then insert their ballot directly into a tabulator at their early voting site. Tomorrow, Tuesday, July 23rd is the start of in-person registration only in the clerk's office between this date and election day. You can, if you register to vote online or through the mail, you will not be eligible for the August election unless you come in person to our office. Tomorrow, Tuesday, July 23rd at 4:00 PM, deadline for candidates for local school board to file an affidavit of identity. board to file an affidavit of identity and a nonpartisan nominating petition. Um, a $100 non-refundable fee may, uh, be filed in lieu of a petition. Uh, we do have two open spots on the school board. I have received one application as of today. Um, so hopefully we get somebody else. And then Friday, July 26th at 4:00 PM, write-in candidate declaration of a deadline for the August primary. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a few questions.
Sorry, Jim.
That's okay. Go ahead. So in light of President Biden declaring himself a non-candidate in the primary and the DNC stating that Kamala Harris would be the candidate, how will the August primary ballots be handled for?
There's no president on the August ballot.
Okay, so there's no primary.
The presidential primary was in February.
Ah, you're right.
It's our, it's our.
Yeah, nothing till November, so.
All right, good. All right. I was serious, I was like, how are we going to fix this? Okay. My bad, my bad.
That's how we fix it.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Uh, David.
Thank you. Uh, for the month of June, Groseal Township had a total invested in, uh, invested assets of 13,822,000. And these accounts generated interest income for the month of $52,650 at an average interest rate of 4.13%. Copy of the investment report is on the, uh, on groseal.com under the Treasurers tab. Let's see. All of the 2024 summer property tax bills have been mailed. If for some reason you've, anyone has not received their tax bill, uh, please contact the Treasurer's Office, uh, so we can verify the mailing address and, uh, send a copy, a copy of the tax bill out to you. That's it from the Treasurer's Office. The DPS Commission on which I sit, uh, the next meeting is August 13th at 7 o'clock. That's a Tuesday evening. And Airport Commerce Park Commission, uh, our next meeting is August 19th. And just a reminder to, uh, all the residents, uh, that Sunday, August 11th, beginning at 10 o'clock, uh, the Vintage Market will be coming back to, uh, to Groseal and it'll be set up in the, in the hangar down here at the, at the airport. And Vintage Market, I believe, is the largest event that we have, uh, next to Island Fest. So I invite you all to stop down and, and see what you can find. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Uh, trustees reports, Joe?
Good evening. I sit on the police commission and they meet in this room, third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM. Um, a couple of things. I want to thank Doug, uh, Chief Carmack here, for giving a nice presentation, showing you where your tax dollars go for in the police department. And as Doug stated, it's simple, it's just a matter of math. Um, and we do lose around $760,000 for a mil. And you just keep that in mind. Uh, but please go vote. And as Brian stated, uh, it starts this Saturday, the early voting, and it's nine days straight, starting at 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and I just asked you to go out and vote. Uh, also, I just want to let you know too, I sent an email to Joe Palmera and Andy Candrevis from Wayne County. If you noticed that article that was in the paper in the grand, uh, last, I guess it probably was July's, um, paper. I'm not sure if that was June or July's. Uh, but it had statements from the county on the county bridge, but the only thing that it didn't cover was probably the two most important things that everyone is asking. Now, I get it, the history of the bridge is important, the design, when it started, this blah, blah, blah. Really, it is, to township people, most of us, it is blah, blah, blah. But wasn't, but was not, um, put in there was, is it still a full closure and for how long? So I sent them an email and obviously they haven't gotten back. I mean, I sent it last week. So hopefully, you know, you know, I send Andy emails and he does get back with Jim, which is great. I don't care if he gets back with me or not, I just want him to get back with us so we can tell the people. There's still people that need to know this. The school needs to know it. Is it a full closure? You need to know it to prepare yourself. The workers that come to Groseal need to know it. Everyone needs to know it that works, visits, stays here. Um, the school has a multimillion dollar project going on right now, and they're trying to figure out, in some cases, their logistics is, do we have to stockpile different supplies and building supplies, if you will? It's big, so I, you know, I, again, you know, I'm very dissatisfied with the county and how they operate, but we need these answers. So hopefully they're going to get back, and if they don't, well, I guess I have to think about November and the next steps that we're going to take here. So the bottom line is, hopefully they'll just get back with us and let us know those two questions because they were not addressed in that, um, letter in the grand, as I stated. And that is the two most important things we all need to know. So anyway, um, that's it. And Brian, thank you for repeating, uh, when, uh, the early voting starts and, uh, I'm good, Jim. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, my comments are as follows. First of all, I sit on the fire commission and I want to thank each and every one of the board members tonight for supporting the purchase of the extractor washer and the dryer. It's a huge investment, um, for quality of life. Uh, it is not a small investment when it comes to financials, but, um, $15,000 when we look at, uh, the men and women that support this, uh, community with first aid and with responses. Uh, we all saw the horrific pictures on September 11th, uh, when the Twin Towers came down and that, uh, cloud that contained so many different particulates. Um, the science has advanced so much since then where we look at, uh, some 23 years later, there's a growing awareness of the carcinogens and the damage that's done. I just want to thank all of the board for just stepping up and saying, hey, it's something that makes us a real special community and we're going to take care of our people. And thank you, John, for all the hard work Chief Camilleri has put into this, as well as the officers and men of the department to find the best, uh, equipment at the most reasonable price. I know you spend several months, uh, looking for outside funds, as we use that term, and, uh, at the end of the day, this is just a win-win for everybody, including the citizens and the firefighters. Um, the second thing is John did, uh, talk about a police millage. Um, I do not take a position on the millage because I cannot, and I am not going to add anything more to what John had to say. His, uh, comments detail a lot of things that, uh, we have, um, as a benefit of the volunteers in this department, in this community. Just so many people, and we hear the term one in a million, or it appears to me that there's about, uh, one in a thousand or every 500 that come forward and volunteer and go through a very rigorous several-year program. They're up all hours of the day and night, and 800 calls is a real push when it comes to covering this community. Um, the last time, uh, the latest statistics, we talked about 2.7 calls a day. That's 24/7, good weather, bad, family matters or not. Um, these people get up and go, uh, they're there during the day, they're there in the afternoon, they're there 100% for us. And thank you for the firefighters for doing that. Next, uh, comment involves the, uh, Meridian overlook that, uh, our Boy Scout, uh, Eagle Scout Project is working on. He's indicated to us, he wants to have a target completion date of, uh, August. I hope to be able to come before you at the, uh, 2nd August meeting and say, come on down, take a look. Um, that is on the west side of Meridian, just a little bit south, about, uh, oh, 700, 800 feet south of Lowry. So if you get a chance, I'm hoping that in August I'll be able to pass along some good news there. You can see there is some progress being done. Um, there is a trail of gravel that's been dropped back there as a first step. Um, finally, I also want to thank Chief Carmack. I've had the pleasure of knowing Chief Carmack for well over 20 years. Um, he does a terrific job. The, uh, police millage, I'm not going to try and repeat, uh, all the things that, uh, the police officers do. Um, it is important that the individual voters assess what this means to the community, what this means to the individuals, what this means to the Groseal experience, because without the fire coverage and the police coverage that we have, this is a totally different community. And hats off to Kathy Walker for, uh, coming up and, uh, acknowledging what, uh, what she has received. And I think if, uh, we were all to do a serious look, um, I would be willing to bet that, uh, every one of us, either our family, immediate family, extended family, or neighbors within , uh, three or four doors, have all received the benefit of public safety on Groseal. Um, it is a renewal. The article that I wrote for the Groseal Grand, um, just touched the surface, and I understand, uh, there could have been 75 points that we would have all touched on that, based on my conversation with, uh, Chief Carmack. And, uh, there is just so much there. It's not just about answering calls for burglaries or missing children, or those are the, the ones that are once in a great while, hopefully they remain that way. But it's all the other things that Doug touched on, that are touched on in that article, and all the things Kathy has touched on over the years, um, that makes us such a special place. So I'd like everybody to consider, weigh the options, weigh the benefits, weigh the costs, and then vote your conscience when you're in the voting booth, if you haven't already voted. And, uh, that concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Carl.
A quick question for John, I guess. What's up on the screen right now? Is that, is that being sent out to the public or, uh, is that just something you, you guys had internally?
That was put on our website, social media site.
Okay.
Couple of weeks ago.
Okay. I just wondered if we were going to get something in the mail with that or not. Okay, thank you very much.
You have a Facebook though, right, John?
Yeah.
I mean, FD has a Facebook.
Yeah, I think that's on, that, I know that's on.
That's on, yeah.
Yeah, but do you have a Facebook?
Yeah. They won't allow me to have.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
I didn't mean to, we're too old for that, John.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, John. Uh, Jameson?
Uh, okay, so I've got a couple of things. First, I would just address some of the resident comments about, um, Jewish Fresh Start, and that's that we don't want to rush to failure, right? Like, we need to make a good decision the first time, and planning and zoning can reject something all day long, but planning and zoning doesn't have a constitutional obligation and fiduciary responsibility to the people of Groseal, right? So, um, you could say, hey, we hate this, we don't like this, but the township board can't just reject something because we don't like it, right? We need to establish a legal basis for any decision we make in the positive or the negative. So I just hope to, um, let the people know that we, we are working on this, right? We're not all twiddling our thumbs and delaying things because we feel like it. Um, but we want to make sure we have all the information and that we make a good decision to protect the constituents of Groseal, right? Not just the entity requesting any kind of variance, but also the other people that live here too, right? Everybody gets equal protection under the law, which includes this board. Um, moving on to, uh, I guess brighter points, um, the, uh, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we're going to start doing a trail maintenance survey, um, which is mostly just some of us riding around on our bikes and seeing what kind of condition the trail's in. So if you, as a resident, have a piece of trail that you think is particularly damaged or requires repair or dangerous, um, you know, let me know on any of the various platforms you can reach me. My email, jayager@groseal.com or Facebook, whatever. Zoning Board of Appeals will meet tomorrow to, uh, review a fence variance. Um, and in other BPAC news, the Bellevue Connector, which was the $2.2 million grant, we are, Groseal's portion is $2.2 million. It's a much larger grant than that to connect all the Down River, uh, communities to the Down River Link Greenways and the Iron Bell Trail, um, is going out for bid. So we will not see any construction in 2024. I've been assured of that, um, but could potentially see, uh, construction in 2025. As to whether Groseal is at the beginning of the project or end of the project will probably dictate, uh, you know, what season we see it come through. So, um, that's still going along. And then I mentioned this last meeting, but, um, the Find Your Way Home Swim will be taking place on September 14th. Um, I think there's 36 people, current, 36 swimmers and a much larger support cadre, um, swimming from Groseal Yacht Club out to, uh, Detroit Light. You can see it from here. It's a very small black dot out there on the horizon. Um, and they're doing so to raise money, uh, to help Step Up Foundation, which helps to raise awareness of, um, certain injuries in veterans that are, are less well-known, such as blast wave injuries and trauma injuries and things like that, that, uh, cause issues later in life, a lot of times after a person's service has ended. Um, so if you want to participate in Step Up Swim, or you want to volunteer, or you've got a really cool boat and you want to transport swimmers back, or you just want to come to the party, um, the website is stepup.org. Should be a good time, so, um, I hope we'll see, uh, lots of participation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jameson. Derek, if you would, please.
Good evening, Supervisor and members of the board. Uh, just a quick couple of items this evening. Uh, first, uh, August 9th and 10th, uh, is our garage sale, our second garage sale weekend of the year. Um, if you wish to have your location and items that you're going to have for sale advertised in the flyer that goes out, uh, for that event, feel free to get ahold of the Recreation Department or here at Township Hall in the admin office. Uh, so once again, that's August 9th and 10th. Um, as a reminder, the Groseal Golf and Country Club will be having event, an event this weekend, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Uh, it's a large event. It's a competitive swimming, um, event that they're hosting. Um, and part of that, uh, event, uh, requires the closure of Bellevue, um, from Meridian Road, um, to about West River Road. Uh, it will, the closure will allow for access to the Water's Edge complex, um, but please avoid that area if at all possible, just simply because of the closure, but also there'll be a significant amount of traffic that will be going to the Groseal Golf and Country Club associated with that event. Um, there'll be some charter buses that'll be coming onto the island as well. Um, so if you see additional traffic, that's what that's all about. I have spoken with the county with regards to the repaving of Meridian Road. Um, I, they have confirmed that they still plan on repaving Meridian Road this construction season. Uh, we're hopeful to be able to get a date out of them, um, within the next week or two, and once we get that, we'll distribute that to the, the public. Um, they are going to be repaving from where they left off as part of the Meridian Road broad, uh, Bridge Project all the way to Bridge Road. Um, so that is still the plan, and soon as we get information about the exact dates of that work, we'll be sure to let the residents know. Um, and I know that it's been brought up to me, um, I, I believe by, uh, Trustee Porcelli, um, as well as a number of, um, uh, residents about the bump at Ferry Road. I did speak with the county with regards to that. They did send an inspector out to review that location. Um, they have told me that, um, based upon their measurements and review, um, it's within the tolerances. Uh, I guess my understanding is that when, what was explained to me is when Ferry Road comes into Meridian, they had to merge the elevations there, um, so that contributed to that elevation differential. Um, I did mention to them that, um, I had had complaints that it appears to be getting worse, um, and they had asked that I continue to monitor that and report back, so we'll be watching that intersection. But, um, I think about a week and a half ago is when they came out and reviewed the location, and they said at that point it was within the engineered tolerances, so.
I think it's fun.
It's interesting.
Thank you, Derek, actually, for, for looking into that.
And it's, it's been, I have had a number of phone calls. Matter of fact, just, uh, one today, as a matter of fact. Um, they're pretty consistent, so. Uh, with that, that concludes my report.
Derek, you want to, uh, why don't you, uh, mention about the bridge?
Sure, so.
If you would.
If the residents recall, uh, probably about a month or so ago, right around the DTE closure, um, the county did a inspection of the, uh, of the Free Bridge. Um, and for that inspection, they were looking at primarily the, the steel superstructure. Um, the township was informed, uh, pretty much today that the, I think that they, the contact is on Friday, but it didn't become official until, um, today, that the weight restrictions on the bridge are going to be slightly adjusted to accommodate, um, for some things that they identified during that inspection. Apparently there's 11, um, pressure plates.
Pressure plates.
Along the bridge span, um, that are in need of replacement. Um, so until they can replace those pressure plates, they're going to be reducing the tonnage, um, from 73 tons on a four or more axle vehicle, um, from 80 to 73, and then a three axle, it's 58, and then a two axle, it's going to be 33. So it's about a, uh, probably close to a 10% reduction in the weight limits. Uh, we don't anticipate any significant, um, impacts with regards to the type of vehi- uh, vehicular or construction traffic that crosses the bridge. construction traffic that crosses the bridge. But we have been getting that information out as of today to those that may be impacted, such as the school district. I did talk to Mike Grema today with regards to that. Also, our community development department has been advised of that for anybody pulling any concrete permits because the halfloads might have to be used. And then also with regards to our trash hauler, and it doesn't appear to be any impact on any of that. In speaking with the county, they did indicate that they're going, they're in the process of reviewing the project scope to replace those plates. They hope to do it as quickly as possible, potentially under an emergency authorization. And once those would be replaced, the limits would go back up to what they are or were prior to today. So once again, 73 ton, 58 ton, and 33 ton. And that signage was swapped out this afternoon, I believe. Anything additional to?
Just that, just that hopefully the work will be able to be done and, you know, like at night. And it shouldn't pose any problem to us actually using the bridge.
Yeah, I think that they're, the scope of work, they still have to figure that exactly, but they didn't think that it was going to result in any kind of closures or anything like that. So, so that's all I had on that.
Thank, thank you, Derek. I had Derek do that, so make mine really short. Next DDA meeting is Thursday at 6:30 in this room. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for coming.